I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening and myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmembers Girvoss, CEO, McClellan, Mitchell, Mayor Protam, Tahr, and Councilwoman Dillon. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, City Treasurer Bennett, Police Chief Rennick was here, and Superintendent Skull and DPW Director Fordice are also with us this evening. The rest of you who are in the audience, if you'd please sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
One amendment I'd like to add under discussion, Faradine property.
That will be last then, Mr. Girvoss, after electronic use policy.
Thank you.
Second is amended.
Okay, so moved by Girvoss, seconded by CEO to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we will pass that by, which brings us to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Mr. Grossman, please.
Eric Grossman, Macon Road, Celine Township. This pertains to the 425 that I discussed with you through your last meeting, and more or less, I'm just here to advocate more for the existing water and wastewater payers and city employees because if the city gets in a financial bind in the future, the people that take the hit on that are the citizens and the employees. So I'm, a lot of it is looking out for them, that you don't make a mistake now that is taxing on both those groups in the future. A lot of the, you know, the water issues I talked about are just a given that are going to be a problem, and, you know, 35 years with the city, I see when you subdivide groups like that, they're going to be back, maybe not while you're on council, but the future council. So if you set up a situation that you really know is going to come back and come back at the city, the mistake is being made now, and I think you should do all you can to avoid that. There are a lot of tough questions, but this is a situation where, you know, you really need to do a lot of investigating and not be on a fast track. Whether it's creative financing, I was at the township meeting, and they discussed, you know, maybe the city pays more, maybe we ask for less millage, maybe the developer kicks in more. You know, whether you do creative financing of, maybe the developer puts more money up front, and you pay them back with tap-in fees over time, I mean, that's a couple million dollars. You know, there's a lot of different things, I'm sure, that you can look into doing that will enhance the city's plans and allow something to happen out there because I think, you know, no one's complained about the progress, it's how it's to be done, and I just, once again, just don't rush into it, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items?
Mary Hess, I went to the Celine Township meeting last week when this was discussed, and city superintendent, or the superintendent, township superintendent said, Mr. Marion, that it was his understanding, and he felt that there was paperwork that stated that the waste treatment plant used by River Ridge was to only be used for that project. And that's what he felt still was. So, and also, there are people that they do not have water pressure at night, and they have problems with water pressure. And I'm hoping that if nothing else, the city is not getting into an agreement before we take care of our own concern and costs with our disposal plant because we owe our taxpayers first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items? No, then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
It's been moved by Mayor Protam Tahr to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Girvoss. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-152. This is MML Annual Liability and Property Insurance Pool Renewal. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 21st, 2017 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the annual renewal premium with the pool for a time period of September 1, 2017, through August 31, 2018, at an amount not to exceed $137,000, $137,066, excuse me.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Girvoss. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. I'd get you on the next one, Ms. McClellan. I'll turn it over to Mr. Campbell, but we also have Judy representing MML again. You've been with us for many years now, and we appreciate your attendance this evening. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the annual renewal, as my memo states, so 3.08 percent increase from this current year that we're ending, so a little over, just about $4,100 increase, and then with our, once approved, then we would receive a dividend in the amount of $14,520 for the annual dividend to the pool, where, again, one of the number of members of the pool, which are municipalities, that we receive our dividend.
Judy, would you care to make a comment at this time? It's not a requirement, but we would welcome any thoughts or observations you may have.
I just want to thank the city for being a long-term loyal member of the MML Liability and Property Pool. It's a member-owned pool, so the dividend is actually a return of surplus of premium. Any money that we collect that is not used to pay claims or expenses gets returned back to members, so just wanted to explain that, and I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Excellent. Well, I would ask you to stay put for just a moment, and I'll see you in just a second if there are any questions from the dais for either our city manager or for our guests from MML. Councilwoman Dillon.
Just quickly, the 3 percent increase, was that just a standard increase?
The increases have been averaging 3 to 5 percent, so you're on the low end of the average.
Okay. And is our dividend similar to past years?
It is about 11 percent of what the city paid in premium last year, and they're voting, the board is voting in September again on a 2018 dividend, and it's being recommended, and I suspect that they're going to approve a dividend for 2018. So it's a little bit, it's slightly less this year, but it's based on a 2.2 versus the previous year was based on 2.4 million return.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Additional questions for staff or our guests? Mr. Girvoss?
I recently had members of our historical society inquire about our museums, our farm, and the Depot Building and so forth. Is there anything that we should be taking precautions or whatever in terms of them being more historical perspective versus just a regular building or such that we have, and to make sure that we can cover any potential damage or anything to that? Or does our policy pretty well cover that?
We ensure to replacement cost, so being a historical building, we may not be able to get exact materials if they don't make them anymore, but we, it's based on replacement cost, so we'll do our best.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for staff or our guests? Judy, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion on the motion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Councilmember Girvoss, seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 17-137. This is Appointment to MERS Annual Meeting. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 21st, 2017 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the appointments to MERS Annual Meeting as recommended by City Manager Campbell.
Move to approve as recommended.
Thank you. Will you acknowledge receipt as well, Mr. CEO?
Yes, I thought that was just part of that.
Yep. Move to acknowledge receipt and approve by CEO. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tahr. Staff, could I make any comment? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the annual meeting for MERS, and some of you may recall, we, not every year do we send somebody representative. If, sometimes if there aren't interest, there's not enough interest, but the last few years there have been, and it is a good educational meeting as well to help better understand the changes that have been occurring with our pension system and such, so we would recommend moving forward with these recommendation to approve.
Very good. Questions for our city manager? No questions, any subsequent discussion on the motion? No, it's been properly moved by CEO, seconded by Tahr, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 17-138. This is Historic District Commission Mission Statement. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 10th, 2017 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the Historic District Commission Mission Statement as presented.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Girvoss. Mr. Fordice, we would welcome a statement from you, sir.
Thank you. The HDC, over the past, about, it was about a two-month effort, I think, to compile this mission statement. One of the reasons we wanted to put together a mission statement is the commission's looking to start a Facebook page to, as an outreach mechanism, to provide more information to historic property owners, and is one of the steps towards that, develop this mission statement here.
Anything you would like to add, Councilwoman Mitchell, as the council representative to the Historic District Commission?
I don't have anything to add, other than we did a fairly thorough look at both in-state and out-of-state historic district commissions, and I was part of the group to develop this mission statement, and we were pleased to look particularly with the piece that we're looking at a house not only in itself individually, but as a context of the whole historic district as a whole.
Very good. Appreciate that perspective, and appreciate your work on this. Are there questions for either our HDC rep or our staff liaison, Mr. Fordice? Mr. CEO, please.
Is there a current mission statement?
There is not.
And the reason we get this is because we're charged with giving them their responsibility, is that correct?
Essentially, yeah. So there's a ordinance that council passed, and that gives Historic District Commission its authority, and there's purposes enumerated in that ordinance, and then this is more of a concise kind of encapsulation of that, so council reviews it to make sure that you're not essentially conveying any additional authority unintentionally through the mission statement, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Additional questions for our council representative or staff liaison? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? No, then I'll call for the vote. It's been properly moved by Councilwoman McClellan, seconded by Councilman Girvoss, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Fordice. We move on now to new business item 17-139. This is Accounting Software Upgrade. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 17th, 2017 memo from Treasurer Bennett, to approve or not to approve the conversion of accounting software to BSA software in the amount of $31,540 for installation in January 2018.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Girvoss, and that was seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Treasurer Bennett, we would welcome a comment and statement from you.
Okay, well, good evening. As you have in front of you, a couple of things I did want to point out is that the full purchase price of $31,540 will be distributed amongst all of the funds that use that, that will include water, sewer, Rock Center, and the general fund. So the portion coming out of the general fund would only be $18,900, and the balance coming out of those other funds that I just mentioned. This is going to be, this would be the last piece of any software, and then we would have the entire platform of all of our city's software on BSNA. Yay, exactly right. This has been a long time coming for multiple reasons, but the BSNA has really came full-fledged with the accounting software. It is used through just about every municipality in the state of Michigan, and when we go to our treasurer's training or municipal finance training, there are actually breakout sessions for training on BSNA, so we're excited to get with the program, literally.
Excellent, pun intended. Thank you, Treasurer Bennett. Other questions for staff? We'll start with Mr. Girvoss.
How will we be handling the conversion? Is it just an upgrade, or do they have to transfer data and a lot of that stuff?
They will transfer all of our history, so there will be a conversion cost in data. We are, one of the reasons I pushed this through so quickly is because when we had the demonstration, they thought January would be as soon as they could get on there, and I really don't want to postpone it much after that. But they, as soon as this gets approved, I will send the quote over, and we will start sending them any data they need so that we can make that transition in January.
And then next year, our auditors will review it, or how will that be handled in terms of, do we anticipate any kind of issues that we would need to have reviewed?
Not at all.
Okay.
And wrapping up my two-weeks audit, in fact, I told my auditors they needed to be here tonight, so they are looking forward to us joining BSNA.
And then just the whole reporting package will look different, or is it similar to what we are currently getting, or?
Well, currently, what you're getting right now is reports that we export into Excel, so it will be a little different, but it will be on the program. The nice thing about this program is that for the, with the current system I have now, there's a seating license for every person who signs onto that machine. So many of the department heads don't have access to get on and see their financial statements to be able to look at their revenues or their expenditures, so there's a lot of time that Joanne and I are spending looking at department heads' inquiries. So this will save that time, it'll be a one, no matter, it's one cost for each application and as many users as we see fit with different settings. To go through that, we will do, you know, a reconciliation when everything comes over to make sure that our numbers balance as of December 30th.
Well, does it have a web interface too, or is it primarily?
Yes, BSNA does have a web interface. We use that currently for our water billing and our taxes. I'm not really sure we would have general, you know, anything of the general ledger out there. We have worked with BSNA, we have the software to also do, they have web access for people to do online permitting, but we're waiting until our new building inspector gets on board, and then we'll launch that, so hopefully at the same time, we'll have a new web presence as well.
That's great to hear.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girvoss. Additional questions? Mr. CEO?
I see you say that this will be included with the first budget amendment?
Yes.
Are we still going to have a balanced budget?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
So in addition to, in my paragraph, I briefly alluded to the fact that when we were doing our budget proposals, we were taking just actual expenses in actual revenues. We have since closed on the Zippy's Car Wash and had the check for $457,000, so that will be coming forward. And then this, along with, I think there was a total cost that we, during the budget discussions, of $137,690 that we moved out of the general fund to defer those expenses until we had a land sale. So included in that is $110,000 for an aerial truck, the BSNA software portion, and then an additional police sign, speed sign or whatever they, the police stuff, I don't know.
Thank you.
So yes, we will have, we will still have a balanced budget because along with these expenditures, I'm bringing you revenue as well. Like I had it in control.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Additional questions for our city treasurer? Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any subsequent discussion on the motion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girvoss, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Last, under new business, is item 17-140. This is Otis Elevator Contract Renewal. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 21st, 2017 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve a five-year contract renewal with Otis Elevator in the amount of $675.49 per month.
Oh, move to approve, sorry.
Move to acknowledge and approve by Mr. Girvoss?
Campbell, yep.
Okay. That was seconded by CEO?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Campbell, do you care to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's essentially another renewal, but this, they've offered a 10 percent savings if we were to enter into a multi-year contract, five-year contract.
Very good. Questions for our city manager? Mr. Tahr?
Not a question, but a comment. I'm very much in favor of the 10 percent discount, so I'm very much in favor of this, making this move.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Additional comments or questions? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girvoss, seconded by CEO, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force Reports from council members. Mayor Protam Tahr?
Yes, I have two. First, the Code Review Task Force met last week, and work is going on, which will eventually come to council in the form of recommendations, on property maintenance, some minor changes, requirements for sanitation requirements based on the work that the ZBA did for the opening of the massage facility recently, and also there's discussion and work on food trucks.
And your second?
And the second is, the Environmental Commission met last week. We celebrated, first of all, very great success, lots of kids at the kids' activities at the Environmental Commission's tent at Summerfest, and then, secondly, I remind you, Countywide Cleanup Day on the 30th of next month, from 9 till 2, and the setup will be like last year's. If you went to last year, the people who come in will be making a circuit around the DPW building, and shortly before the event, the commission hopes to put out a list of the order of the state drop-off stations so that you can pack your vehicle accordingly, so that you, when you pull in, the thing that goes up at the first station is the first thing, the first thing on your trailer or in your vehicle. And finally, the Celine B. Green Award nominations are being accepted until, ending on the 30th of next month, and we expect to be giving those awards at the council meeting on November 20th. We received one award nomination on the email form, on the web-based form, unfortunately, it was a nomination for Green Thumb Award, not Celine B. Green, so it was passed along. We've received at least one in paper forms. There are paper forms here at City Hall, and you can also find an online form at celinebgreen.com. Thanks.
Very good. Councilwoman McClellan, you had Commissioner Committee report.
Yep. Just, I just want to announce that the Parks Commission will be meeting tomorrow, which is different than our regular scheduled meeting because of vacations and things, so tomorrow at 7 o'clock here at City Hall, we will be discussing the People's Park parking situation, so if you are interested in giving feedback on that, please come and give us your thoughts. Also, the Green Thumb Awards, you'll see the signs around town, the nomination time has closed for that, but we will be deciding on the winners of those awards shortly, and you'll be hearing from us in the near future on who the winners are.
Very good. Other Commission Committee or Task Force Reports. Mr. CEO?
The Police Advisory Committee Task Force met again for the third time this last week. I believe we're close to coming with a recommendation. I met with the city clerk today to see if we could have space on the agenda for September the 18th meeting to come to council with our recommendation.
Very good. Excellent. We will make sure you have space.
Thank you.
Additional Committee, Commissioner, Task Force Reports. How about reports or other announcements? Mr. Girvoss?
I'd just like to thank the community for their support at the yard sale at the farm. There was over 2,000 people that visited it that day. The booths all did extremely well, and hopefully some of that money will be put towards the support of the pig barn that's needing a new roof on it. Part of the other thing I wanted to bring up as announcement is my concern that I've had with potential repairs and things that are needed at the farm, and I forwarded to everyone an email about, we potentially had a problem at the one barn where the post fell and the floor dropped about three inches, and so we've had to sturdy that up, and that's part of the pig barn. So that's definitely a potential issue that we need to look at in our coming budgets and so forth. The society is willing to provide money and support, it's just trying to figure out if we can provide some kind of cost sharing to not make it so much a detriment to them. They put a significant amount of work into doing repairs and things on those buildings. In fact, almost all the windows on the barns have been replaced in the last few months by Bob Wintersheim and his effort and labor, and we could not have been able to have done that without that kind of ability. So I want to bring that in. We are trying to raise funds, but we also are at a point now where I think we seriously have to address these before somebody potentially gets armed, and that was one of my concerns with insurance tonight.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mr. Girvoss, and I hope that this sentiment is shared, well, I hope this sentiment is unanimous from the dais. The Depot Museum, the Regsler Farm are, well, they're things that make this community really special and unique. Not every community could boast those types of assets, and what is undeniable is that if we don't front some money to do some preventable maintenance, it will cost us more in the long run. So I'm in favor of engaging in any sort of partnership that would remediate some of these issues.
Appreciate it.
Additional reports or announcements? Mr. Tahr?
Yeah, I'm sorry. If I could just go back to the cleanup, Washtenaw County Cleanup Day on September 30th. There is, this is an event that's sponsored by the Washtenaw County Water Resources Commissioner's Office, and the county does pay for the event, but the county's budget is not sufficient to put on as many of these as they would like and just simply pay for them. So there is a suggested donation of $10 per vehicle plus suggested donations for certain kinds of things if you drop them off, so just, it's not a requirement, but in order to help the county do as many of these as possible, donations are suggested.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? I actually have a statement that I would like to read. I've been contacted by a number of community members regarding some national events, and in a way, I regret that I have to verbalize this in 2017, but I'm going to. "In light of recent events in Virginia and elsewhere, and as your mayor, I feel compelled to issue the following statement. The city of Celine stands in solidarity with any community that is besieged by hate-mongers, deviants, or encouragables. No reasonable person should object to the following statement. White supremacy and Nazism are not compatible with Americanism. The United States stands for the proposition that we are all created equally, and we all should be afforded basic rights under the law, including freedom and opportunity. Locally, the city of Celine has and will continue to value all of our citizens regardless of personal characteristics. If you work hard, play by the rules, and contribute to our community, you will always be welcomed and supported here. We will continue to strive to make our area a safe and inclusive place for all of our residents. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on, how about redevelopment-ready communities? Mr. Campbell, do you want to give an update on that? I'm sorry. Oh, my apologies. Wastewater Treatment Plant, Mr. Skull. I'll bump you to the end, and you can stay here another 45 minutes?
Thank you. As far as the wastewater plant update, we're still struggling with the filters. They went down again the first week of August. Again, the company's very responsive, but the reliability has not been there yet, so we're still holding back the money. We had a two-month failure-free agreement before we released the rest of the money, so we're sticking to that. Glasses here. Where the odor study will be ready next week. I'm reviewing it, everybody's reviewing it on staff, and we should have it ready for you Monday. The odor complaints are still coming in. They're not at the same rate they were last summer or earlier this season, but we are still receiving them. Most of them are from the same people, but they're still coming in. Any questions?
Just to clarify, most of the support material and the agenda for next Monday's meeting will be delivered either Thursday or Friday at the very latest, so they'll have the weekend to review the material in advance of our Monday meeting. The other thing I want to say about the Monday meeting is it begins at 7:30. Bob will be here, a number of staff people will be here, our financial advisor will be here, as well as representatives from Tetra Tech and Webster Environmental. It'll be an all-inclusive conversation, and I am extremely eager to develop consensus and a path forward, so prepare for a long evening if necessary, because I want to, I want to be able to say definitively to our citizens that we have a, you know, a path and a resolution that's about to be implemented. Questions for Mr. Skull? Mr. Girvoss, do you have one?
Yeah, just curious, what are we doing in terms of the odor scrubber, and how are we treating the sewage? Are we trying to add? Are we trying to address the sulfur smell with a chemical, as we mentioned?
We are. We're treating it with hydrogen peroxide. But the thing to keep in mind with that is it's only for the preliminary treatments, only for one small section of the plant. We don't want to add that where it could affect the biological portion of the plant.
Because it could end up killing whatever.
I mean, we're going to have to look at this as a whole approach to the whole plant when we go about looking for what we're going to do in the future.
Because, yeah, definitely, I was surprised it was smelling about 11:00 on Saturday night when I arrived home. So I was, usually it's been around 8:30 sunset, but this was later at that night, so, okay. Thank you.
Ms. McClellan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that it's 7:00 meeting.
Yes, my apologies, I missed it until 7:00. Ms. Mitchell?
That was...
Okay. Additional questions for Mr. Skoll, Ms. Dillon, and then Mr. Seal.
Okay, first, do we have sort of a drop-dead date when we're going to cry uncle and let go of the NOVA filters at this point? I mean, they've consistently failed. When are we going to say enough?
I don't know when that date would be, because the alternative is, we need the filters to meet our permit. So we could look at keeping them running and going in a different direction. Hopefully, it will come to that, because that'd be very expensive, but... And it appears that most of the problems with the filters are stemming from a subcontractor's parts they're supplying. They've been trying to alleviate that. Basically, these filters spin, and they're on these trunnion wheels, which are these big plastic wheels. And these wheels are where 80% of the failures have occurred. And they're looking at different sources or different materials to replace those wheels with.
So can you remind me again of what our warranty situation is with these? Are we, is our warranty perpetuating because they keep failing, or we have a stop warranty date?
The warranty, excuse me, the warranty was expanded because we were having issues. It went from one year to three years.
Right. But we're into, what, the eight-month mark now?
I think they renewed the warranty in December, wasn't it? So I think we're eight months into the warranty.
Yeah, so we're quite a ways into the first year, and they're not stable. I mean, I just, I don't know at what point we're going to just have to just change course. I mean, can we rely upon a part that we know is going to perpetually fail? I mean, it doesn't seem as though it's one cog that they can replace, and, you know, that would have just been one incident. The fact that it keeps happening just makes me very nervous, that we're going to get down into the two- or the three-year mark, and we're that far down the road, and we're going to be out of warranty, and then still have to deal with finding something different.
I have the same concerns on that as well, but I don't know what the, what would be the event that forces us in that direction. I don't have an answer for that right now.
Okay. And then my next question is, is the odor study in? Is there a reason why we're not getting it yet, that we're waiting until Thursday, if it's already in?
So we received, staff received a draft a little after 5:00 on Friday, and so we are reviewing it. We have a, just like we do with any significant study, staff meets with the folks doing the study to review, make sure that all the information is corrected, that they have everything that they, that they need, and if there's any changes that need to be made, and then will be presented to council.
Okay, it just seems like there's going to be a lot of data, a lot of material in there that's going to need reviewing, and it's going to be time-consuming. And to get something like that possibly on Friday, when Mr. Campbell, Mr. Skoll are going to be gone for the weekend, I mean, I don't want to, I mean, I know you're readily available if need be, but it shouldn't be that way. I mean, it should be during business hours. So I guess my thing was, you know, if there's any way we could have it on Wednesday, so we would have Thursday and Friday to ask you questions, because it's very difficult to come in on Monday and start asking questions when you've already reviewed it three days before.
Well, the questions, quite frankly, will be of Webster, because they're the authors of the study.
Right, but sometimes there's clarifications as to what things mean, and I would assume there's some technical things. That's just my two cents, thank you. I just wanted to add that in there, that I would like to get it as soon as possible.
And we will certainly do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
If we can get it sooner, we'll get it out.
Mr. Seal?
I just was going to ask about the nature of the problem too, but you've already answered that, so thank you.
Additional questions?
Yeah, I just want to take on to that one. How long are those filters down when you're having to replace that part?
They're usually down for two or three days. They're very responsive. It's just the repetitiveness of the failures is troubling.
What does that mean for us in total? Is one running and one's down, or are they both down at the same time?
Usually, that's the case, is one's running, one's down. There have been times where both were down. And depending on the season, which we've been fortunate so far, it could be an issue with compliance if it happened too often or too lengthy, too long of a time. But that hasn't occurred yet. Again, NOVA's very responsive, I got to hand it to them on that.
And we're still confident with their viability as a company? They're a large company that we're not worried about?
As far as we know, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure this isn't like a division of them, and all of a sudden we have an issue because this product is failing and they abandoned it, so...
I have to say, Bob, you're the expert, I know very little about this. I mean, not only have I been impressed by their response, they've, their CEO has reached out to me, and I said, you need to talk to Mr. Skoll. I'm not a technical, operational expert, but...
But it might be time for another letter from the CEO to understand what's going on.
That's fine, I don't have any objection to that. Okay. You'd be able to, between the two of you? Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
I just want to piggyback on what Ms. Dillon said and Mr. Skoll. Ms. Dillon asked the question, you know, what is going to be the event that makes us need to change direction? And Mr. Skoll said, you know, he's not sure what that event is, but I think it would be very prudent of us to identify that and do some forecasting, and start looking at what is our decision tree look like, and what are the costs? I'm just not comfortable trusting that anything is going to change. If this has been the pattern, as long as I've been on council, I don't have any confidence that this is going to change, and I think it's wise to plan ahead.
Why don't you and your associates at the wastewater treatment facility, why don't you analyze that? Also, reach out to the CEO, maybe come back and speak with a little bit more clarity at our next council meeting.
Yeah, I can check with Tetra Tech as well, because anything we switch to will have a fabrication period of nine months, whatever. The same with these filters.
Of course.
So that's always something to consider.
Right.
On the flip side of the coin, I just want to let everybody know that number five, we had lost one of our wells during the winter, and we got that back up and running. The drive is fine, motor's fine, so our firm capacity's back to normal, and we got very lucky on that. Copper led the study, I'm still waiting for the results to come back, but the data looks good.
Okay. Bob, thanks. Appreciate it. Transitioning to redevelopment-ready communities. Ms. Bennett, you're going to take the lead on this. Do you want to give maybe a brief overview? And then, of course, if council members have additional questions or concerns, they can direct them through the city manager.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, just as a reminder, back in March at the council meeting, the city council passed a resolution putting ourselves, engaging ourselves in with the readiness redevelopment, redevelopment-ready community through the state of Michigan. And recently, we received a welcome guide, and they're reviewing our self-evaluation that was performed by myself with great help from Gary Rubel and Celine Mainstreet and some of our other partnerships in EverSpark. So they're reviewing that, and they'll be forthcoming with some recommendations. But basically, just as a quick reminder to the city council, what the red, what this does is it is a review from outside sources of our policies and procedures to make sure that we're being, we're doing everything we can to work with developers and other businesses. One of the steps is that they will interview some developers. In fact, I've already got the request from the state of Michigan for some, you know, some names and stuff for interviews. So we are well on the way, we are in the engaged process, which will also qualify us if there are any state funding available for any projects or anything like that. So just as a reminder, and just wanted to let you refresh your memories on what it was that, we've been doing this for, we've been working on this for a while, and I just wanted to remind you.
Very good. There are questions for our city treasurer? Ms. Bennett, thank you very much. Moving on to 425 agreement with Celine Township. To reiterate a point I made at our previous meeting, I am looking for consensus on how best to move forward on these issues this evening. Before we get to that, are there any questions for staff or for the petitioner? No? Does staff, Mr. Campbell, do you care to make any comment at this time? No? Howard, Bill, do you care to make any comment at this time? Not necessary, but we'll provide you one last opportunity if that's your wish.
I wasn't really, Alan Green?
Yep.
Dean my dress, or, is that okay?
No, no.
Okay. I wasn't really prepared to make any comments. I did, did ask your attorney if he had any questions for us to answer, and there really wasn't any, but we're prepared to answer whatever questions. We're far along, maybe to report this, we've pretty much got the contracts in place, provided we get approval with River Ridge. So there's a lot of work that's been going on for a year in that regard. And we also have, you probably have all the information, as I said, listening to this, what you guys are going through right now, it sounds like you're going to have a meeting on your, on the current wastewater treatment plant. And we had done, through Tetra Tech, a lot of studies on that. That's why we ended up where we're at with respect to the River Ridge facility, because the studies that we did, or Tetra Tech did at our expense, indicated for serving our property, that you just needed so many improvements, very expensive improvements to your current facilities, you didn't have capacity, and there's no pipe that can service us at this moment. So, you know, we want to work cooperatively, we'd love to be in the community. I heard the gentleman, I get it, understand, no rush to judgment. From our perspective, it's been, I mean, we spent two years studying the treatment plant and water system that you had, and then we were literally ready to complete our development, move forward in the township when we started this process, and that's been now since November. So we'd love to be in the city, we'd love to work with you guys on this, and so we hope you're willing to do it. It was a creative solution to try to, you know, address an intractable problem. The township wants us to be here, and so anytime, any question you have, anything we can give you, we're prepared to do that. But we would ask that at least you make a decision somehow to either move it forward or make a decision that you're not willing to do it, and then we'll have to go on and continue with the township.
Very good.
Okay?
One last opportunity for questions, if you hang tight. Mr. Seal?
Yeah, sure. Although I wasn't at the meeting, I read in Celine Post, the statement from Mr. Marion and Mrs. Hess alluded to earlier during our public comment period, that he felt that the capacity at the River Ridge plant was designed only for the current residences that are already built in River Ridge, and that he thinks that any development that would come into the city should be serviced by the city, and that he intends to stand by that. How do you answer that? Is it strictly an agreement between you and River Ridge, not requiring the consent of the township, or?
No, we, that's really, and I'm not really sure what Mr. Marion is saying there. This, we were pursuing the development in the township with River Ridge, and the township approved our plant, our plans, I mean, approved our PUD plan, liked the project, but they made it conditional on taking some more time to go back to the city one last time to try to resolve it. I'm told by the city's attorney, who I've been dealing with all the time, that the city, I'm sorry, that the township, township's attorney, that the township had a meeting back in last February, where they approved this project, this 425 agreement, with the understanding that we would be served by River Ridge. It was a township board meeting. And I think what Mr. Marion's referring to about capacity, it wasn't, and I know this because I worked on that, it wasn't that the capacity was designed or limited to the manufactured home community. It was initially built for the manufactured home community, and then it was expanded to serve the condominium project, the stick-built condominium project that the same developer did. And as part of the consent, there was a consent judgment that was entered into with the township to build the condominiums, and that consent judgment, which allowed the River Ridge utilities to serve the condos, said that it can't be expanded to serve other properties, which we all know about, and the township would have to approve that, they can amend the consent judgment. So it was always understanding, I think it's even referenced in the 425, draft 425 agreement, that the township is approving it and approving the amendment to the consent judgment, as well as the River Ridge developer, who was a party to the consent judgment, would be amending that as well. So that's the issue. It wasn't, it wasn't that there's no capacity or it can't be used, it was part of a limitation that the township didn't want an expansion of development, particularly on that side of Michigan Avenue, which was adjacent property to that, to continue, and the only way it could continue at that point was to use the River Ridge utilities, because it was not, it wasn't this area of the township where it was always intended, or hoped that it would be annexed to the city. So I think that's what he was saying. But I was at, I wasn't at that meeting, but I've been at every other meeting that we've had on this project in front of the township. And again, other than the desire that this property be developed in the city, which was what the township's master plan calls for, I'm not sure there was any other issue that I recall. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Seal. Additional questions? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. So can you review the numbers once more, again, please? The proposed development is going to have how many single-family homes and how many condos?
I think in total, the residential's 550?
150.
Oh, 150, why?
150 on the single-family, 110 on the multi.
About 20 acres of REU.
Okay.
110 of the condo, multi.
Right. And the initial project that we were actually going forward and got, and were getting approval for was the, was the single-family. We plan on developing the single-family first, be a multi-phase project, then do the multifamily, and then probably not the commercial for some time. It would depend on demand, because it's going to be neighborhood commercial, and we hope that the development itself will help spur, you know, that development. I mean, it's within, what, a mile of the city center? So we expect a lot of these folks will use city businesses and services, whether they're in the township or not.
The Post article that Mr. Seal referred to also gave another statistic, as the cost per house, if we were to develop with city water, that the extra cost would be $20,000 per house, is that correct?
Do you remember what the costs were?
... bring the utilities to site.
Mm-hmm. City, city utilities.
Yeah. I think the city studies came to about $24,000 per REU, so significantly more, which made it, you know, not economically viable for us in the city system.
I'm sorry, can I, can I?
Oh, sorry.
When you say significantly more?
Right.
More than?
More than typical water and sewer fees.
And what are your typical water and sewer fees?
They're anywhere from five to 10,000.
What are your sewer taps here?
Sewer taps.
What are the sewer taps here?
Four thousand a unit, maybe? Something like that.
Right. So instead of 4,000 a unit, it's like 24,000. And that did not include, the problem as well was that there was a share that the city would have to bear to actually upgrade its treatment system, and that was some significant amount of money that the city would have to raise, even with our contributions in that regard.
A resident raised a concern about access to the River Ridge system and being able to, to access properly and possibly having to work under US 12. What have you provided for? What kind of investigation have you looked into?
You have to talk about that.
Yeah, this is, I'm Howard Fingerroot, I'm the managing partner at Pinnacle Homes. This is, it's fairly common, typical development to work under right-of-ways, we could directionally bore under US 12. You know, it's a, I think that's an M. You know, it's, I think that's an M dot road. We get a permit, we can, you know, the two choices is to open, cut it, and go across, or directionally bore under it. So we do both of those, this is a regular course of business. So we've studied it. Bill Anderson's our engineer, he's actually been looking at this project for, I think, close to 10 years. So, we've done a fair amount of research.
And then as far as the wastewater treatment plant capacity at River Ridge, I'm hearing a lot of talk, but I guess, I don't know that I've seen anything in writing that talks about capacity or talks about the history. I mean, do you have some documentation?
Well, actually, the capacity, understand, doesn't exist today.
Uh huh.
So we would be going to the DEQ, and we have gone to the DEQ, and we said we want to expand it so we can include our development, and we got a verbal yes, there is the adequate amount of all sorts of technical things in order to do the expansion. So, the next step would be to go to the DEQ and formally apply to get the expansion.
And do you have an estimate of how much the expansion might be?
The costs? Yeah, so, Bill's number, if we came to the city, and it's broken really down into two components, okay, it was like 24,000, $25,000 per unit. It's the amount of money that it would take to upgrade this current city systems is one component. The second component is to bring pipes from our site to your system, so we can get, so both, that's about $24,000 a unit. I think the total cost, and it's all in the studies that we had done, was in the $12 million range. It was, and again, it's documented in the Tetra Tech studies that we've, that we've paid for, and we're going to do the whole thing, you know, it'll be a couple million dollars, but that's much more economical than 12 million. You would ask the question, what's typical? The tap fees, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's $4,200 right now if you're in the city of Celine and you want to tap in, and it's $1,900 for water. So combined, it's $6,000. I'm in 14, I have 14 developments right now. We range from 2,500 to 13,500. So, this would be on the high end, I'm probably going to be in the 14,000 range, so I guess this would be the highest I pay out of the 14 communities that I currently develop and build houses in.
So what is the advantage of belonging to the city for you? If you're not getting your utilities, what is the business case?
I guess there's, there's two ways to look at it, okay? First is from the township's perspective. There's not a large population in the township. I think there's concern on bringing on 150 new houses and the support it would take to support those. We've been, obviously we've been working with your staff, and they said the city can support that, okay? So, if it's for us, whether we're in the township or we're in the city, it really, it doesn't matter, the property's in the same location, and the, and our homeowners are going to use the facilities and the retail and everything of the city, and that's wonderful.
Taxes are much higher.
Taxes are higher, so it does do that. What, so the township would prefer that the city services, other than the utilities, the services, other than the utilities, come from the city, so they don't need to do that. From the city's perspective, and again, this is talking with the staff, is we're kind of the next piece of property west of the city. So if we went into, if we stayed in the township, it kind of blocks the city from moving any farther west if it's desirous. And I'm not telling you it's desirous or not desirous, but at least it gives you an avenue for the future to expand the city to the west and actually to the north. Otherwise, we kind of block it. That wasn't the motivation for us being here. The motivation for us being here is the township saying, this may be more than we can handle, I'm paraphrasing, the city can handle it much better, so if you can get your utilities here, because it's too expensive to get from the city, and all the other city services, will give the city most of the tax dollars, and you negotiated in the 425 agreement, that there's a few mills to go into the township. But the majority of the mills, my understanding, would be going to the city. One mill to the township.
Thank you.
Additional questions at this time? Just looking for questions. Ms. McCollum?
The tap fees that you mentioned, so if you were with, if, say you were getting the water from the city, those fees would come to the city. Where are they going to go currently? To the township or to River Ridge, to the developer?
We are going, we are going to expand, we're going to pay for the expansion of the River Ridge water and sewer facilities, and then we're going to pay them some amount to tap in. Okay, so tap fees, as kind of prescribed, goes for capital improvements. So there's two components, there's the capital improvement part, which we pay a fee for in here, and then there's the usage fees, and obviously if we tapped into the city utilities, we would pay, be paying you the usage. What we're going to be doing instead is paying River Ridge the usage fees for the sewer and the water.
Mr. Girbahn has a question.
Just a couple. The DEQ permitting process, that's going to be all a public hearing required, or do you not have to go through that? Right. So, we as a city would have, would under that. The other question, as you mentioned, shoot, give me a second, I just lost.
Can I can point where you're, where you're in line with what you're just saying? The way the, at least the draft 425 agreement is, is that the city has absolute right to review and approve all the engineering for the, for the utility services, because we're designing it to city standards. So even though we'll be getting the private utilities, all of the pipes, everything, the whole system will be designed to your standards, and I suppose there's always, there's always the, there's a place in that agreement that says, also, there's a possibility, if ever in the future, whatever, something happens, that it becomes feasible and reasonable to connect the development, take it off River Ridge, it can be done. In other words, we're going to have the pipe that will be available, you know, in the right-of-way on the street, that could connect to a city system someday in the future. So you would be involved, to answer your question, in the entire review process, as we go through the, if we go through residential development, you would see all that, and your engineers would review and approve.
Either way, we would be.
Yeah.
Because we could always comment on what, if the development happens in the township. No, the other question I had was in regard to, once you have the project done, you're walked away from it, it's all done. River Ridge only needs to maintain a two-to-five-year period of operational perspective. There's, according to the law and the state, there's only a certain period of time in which they must maintain a operational fund budget or whatever, to keep their costs going, and that's, I know it's a certain period of time. Of course, that's our biggest worry, as a perspective of how it plays out in the, you know, two years down the road after it's closed, all of a sudden they have issues with their plant and everything, and keeping it operating, it becomes that area's responsibility. Unfortunately, we as the city are going to be looked to as being the ones that are potentially going to be the ones that would resolve it. And I think that's where I'm coming from, the perspective, so what are your understanding in terms of what you're going to be responsible for, or that River Ridge will be responsible for initially?
Well, there's, at some point, I suppose we should just get you the agreement, so you could look at it, but there is, there are escrow arrangements to cover not just operational, but replacement of the facility. The whole idea, it's like you're putting aside money that the DEQ requires, so by a certain time period, the money is available, that you can actually replace parts of the system, or the entire system is necessary. And that's in addition to the provisions we have in there about the assessments, special assessments. We'll have a condo association that's set up, it's all set forth in the agreement, too, just like for any other asset of a condominium, that, you know, they're going to be paying in, not just a user fee, they'll pay whatever their utility users' fee is, but they'll also be paying in a set, an assessment for the replacement, just like roads. If I had private roads in my development, you would have, in the condominium association, they'd be paying, part of their assessment would be a road fund to replace the roads after 20 years, when they, when they need to be replaced. In this particular case, I think we'll have public roads.
How do you, yeah, how do you build the initial escrow, though, for that sewer treatment plant?
There's some hefty, that's part of what we're talking about, our expenditure is, when we talk about the $2 million or $3 million, whatever it's going to cost, there's, there's the design fees, there's the, we're going to pay, whatever costs to improve or expand that facility is our dime under this agreement, and then they're obligated to continue to maintain and operate the system like they're doing right now. It's a little bit different, too, in the sense that I've seen systems, like I'm dealing with one in Lyon Township that serves a big residential development, and there's never been any issue or problem there, but this system, too, also serves the Mobile Home Park, and the Mobile Home Park is a single-owner facility, so they control it, they, it's a big issue for them. If, it's not like turning it over to association, if the system fails, you've got 300 homes or whatever the number is that you've rented out, that you're responsible for. So, they, they pay a big chunk of what they need to do to keep it operational. And it's operated, we could talk about, like, the details, I know you want to get all those details from the engineers and people that really know what they're talking about, but it's operated just like a public system, the standards are the same, they hire an experienced operator who does, knows how to operate plants, they make reports to the DEQ on a regular basis, just as you guys do on your plant. It's virtually identical, and we need to have, you need to be comfortable, but we will have a system in place that will assure that, you know, it'll be there and continue to operate and be maintained and replaced forever, essentially. But.
In addition to that, just the current system itself is supporting 400 to 450 homes right now, between the Mobile Home Park and the Manufactured Home Park and the condominiums. So it will be expanded basically from this 400 to 450 to, you know, 600, 700. So the facility is in place now, and with the understanding that it's going to be maintained in perpetuity, because there's 400 families basically using these facilities that currently.
Right. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Looking at your drawings, real quick, I want to go back to sort of what your timeframe is for the homes. Is, are you going to build all at once? Are you building in phases? Are you building as sold?
It's clearly going to be phased, and I would anticipate doing three phases roughly of 50, 50 homes each.
Okay. And what is the timeframe, because what does future mean to you, as far as future commercial development?
You know, that's really, as Alan stated earlier, it's market-driven, and I really don't see retail in this area for a long time. And if I was going to give you an over-under, I'm not a betting person, but if I was a betting person, I'd say it's probably 10 years.
Okay. And what about the multifamilies?
The first phase would be strictly single-family. Say, like, if all the planets aligned, and we're able to do Phase 1 in the summer of 2018, I would probably try to do the condominiums in 2019 or 2020.
Okay. And what do you envision for that? Because right now, you're talking about 150 homes on 73 acres, correct? But then you're talking about 110 multifamilies on only 20 acres.
Right.
Are you talking a high-rise?
No, 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 no.
What are?
That's, that's five an acre, so that's maybe duplexes, triplexes, wads. Typically ranches, maybe two-story.
Okay.
But five an acre for multifamily is actually not a particularly dense multifamily. And when you average the two in there, they're below what the master plan density was, which was like three to four an acre total.
And you would, and you would see all that, the way the, again, with the way the agreement works is that if you approve, if both sides approve the 425 agreement, there's time periods set forth there that we have to get MD, first we have to demonstrate to you that we've got approval from River Ridge, so that would be the contract with River Ridge by a date certain. Then we have to show you that we've got an MDEQ permit to be able to operate that by a date certain, or the agreement terminates or can be terminated. Then we have a time period within, within which to get an approval of, whether it's a preliminary PUD plan or a conditional zoning plan, we have to come to the city then with our plans, and then we'd go through the process of site plan review. So you would, and then, and then if we didn't, if that wasn't approved or worked out, then there was a termination, too. So it all goes together, it's not like this, in this agreement, you're immediately buying into, you know, the sketch plan that you see. We would be coming to the city and the planning commission, you know, with plans, and go through the process that you would review in that regard, so.
So really, the 425 agreement is the beginning of the process, not the end of the process?
Right.
And we would be using all the city ordinances to go forward with site plans?
Now, I thought I remembered in one of these multi-pages, you're going to have your own well on-site, is that a backup well?
No, we have, there's, there's two options. One is to use the community well that River Ridge has right now. We have to explore the expansion of that, and if it's feasible.
There's capacity. We already, we already know that.
Oh, there is capacity, okay. But we're also going to explore whether it's better to put in a separate well system for, for our development.
So you would maintain your own, in that theory, you would maintain your own water and just use River Ridge for waste?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Here's how this is going to work. I'm going to actually pull rank and start, and then I'll transition to, to my right and get Mayor Pro Temp to hear his thoughts, work my way down to Councilman Seo, and then jump back to this side and begin with Councilmember Girbahn and with Councilwoman Mitchell. So first, let me thank staff and legal counsel for their work on this matter. Also, I appreciate Howard and Bill, associated with Pinnacle Homes, for their patience and their cooperation during this process. It's also worth noting that you have been well represented by attorneys at Dykema, one of our state's most prestigious and respected law firms. Additionally, I want to thank all the citizens and community members who expressed their thoughts and opinions on this important public policy matter. I especially thank those citizens who went beyond the social media posts and news articles to ask questions and find out more about this complex and multidimensional issue. And again, while only indirectly related, I want to reiterate that the city's first and primary focus and responsibility will be resolving recent odor issues at the wastewater treatment facility. I have long supported a policy of smart growth, expanding our tax base to fund vital services that have a direct impact on our quality of life. At the same time, I understand the importance of maintaining our small-town charm and character. I know that growth and change will happen, but it must be appropriately managed, and we must put a strong emphasis on aesthetics, connectivity, creating the appropriate balance between residential, commercial, and industrial development, and offering services and amenities that enhance our citizens' quality of life. After careful thought and consideration, I have determined that it is not in the community's best interest to pursue the proposal that is currently before us. However, I do have, I do have thoughts on how the city and city council specifically should proceed. First, on principle, I believe that every parcel that's annexed into the city should accept our utilities. Second, when the city enters into a cooperative 425 agreement, the parcel or parcels in question must immediately be brought into the city and remain with the city in perpetuity. Third, for the purposes of negotiation, the city's standard revenue-sharing agreement should be one to 1.5 mills for a period of 10 years. Finally, I believe all these items should be codified and made a matter of policy, thus providing staff and legal counsel direction and clarity when they are approached by property owners or developers in the future. Now, as, as was mentioned at a previous meeting, and as it relates to parcels that are subject to annexation, it is not economically feasible for most developers to subsidize the basic costs of infrastructure like water and sewer. If this continues, it will inhibit our ability to grow as a community. Also, we have had numerous conversations about capacity at our wastewater treatment plant, and this, too, needs to be addressed. Accordingly, I am strongly suggesting that city council convene a work meeting or meetings in the coming months to have a very focused discussion about extending utilities and creating more wastewater capacity. In fact, staff has already received a proposal from Tetra Tech to perform a wastewater treatment plant siting study. Needless to say, these will not be easy issues to resolve, and while they may not seem like immediate needs, I believe it's incumbent on elected leaders to have a long-term vision and to deal with substantive public issues which may be decades out. That's my perspective on this matter. And Ms. Tahr, can I turn it over to you for, for your thoughts and opinions?
Yes, Ms. Tahr, I have to follow. Mr. Mayor, I'll start by saying, so I... Mr. Mayor, I'll start by saying, so I, and first, I will say, I, essentially, although some of the factors you've brought up, I hadn't thought, hadn't considered in preparation for this meeting, I am in agreement with everything the mayor has articulated. This is, you know, this is an interesting, interesting timing at a moment when we have serious concerns about our wastewater treatment plant and issues at the wastewater treatment plant. We're looking at bringing in an additional parcel into the community, into the city, and doing it without city resources, without full city services. And I am, I'm not in favor of that model of adding to the city. I agree with the mayor that if we bring additional areas into the city, they should be receiving all city services. The pivotal moment for me in thinking about this was during one of the discussions when City Attorney Smith pointed out to us that despite all of the safeguards and all of the contract language that would insulate the city from being responsible for the utility services in the new development, that as taxpayers, if there were a problem, taxpayers and city residents would come to the city for resolution even if on paper and strictly defensible it was not our responsibility. And I don't see that as a good model, and I don't feel that it's a good thing to settle future, possibly settle future city councils with. I'm not sure how I feel about growth, pros and cons. There are pros and cons, and I understand the argument about not closing the door to expansion to the west, but I think if we need, if we want to be open to future growth, I believe, unlike the mayor, that the long-range utilities planning is an immediate problem. If there's any possibility of expanding this, expanding, growing the city further, I believe very firmly that we need to have some kind of plan in place, long-range plan for utilities planning. So, that's where I am.
Very good. That's very helpful. Ms. Dillon.
Okay, this is just getting harder and harder as we go down the line. I have to say that I really agree with both the mayor and Ms. Tahar in that if you're going to be a city resident, you should be a full-fledged resident in receiving all of the goods and services and benefits of being a city resident. Picking and choosing à la carte, whether it's water and sewer, I just don't feel as though, is giving you the full experience. You're paying the taxes, you deserve all the benefits of it. I also have concerns about what would happen if we've heard about that we would not be responsible. But at the end of the day, these are people. It's not like just empty farmland. If their water went bad, or they did not have sewage, something would have to be done immediately. It's, we couldn't wait for the legal system. And the city would probably have to step in. Because, that's just my opinion, that would be the right thing to do. You cannot leave people stranded. So at this point, I am not in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon. Councilman Seale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gentlemen, I appreciate all the work you've gone to, but I have to throw my hat in the same ring as the people who've spoken previous to me. I have never believed that it was a good idea to enter into a 425 agreement where utilities were provided by another entity other than the city itself. I think it makes for bad policy. I'm further pushed in that direction tonight by your comments, sir, that you would either tap into the water provided by River Ridge or perhaps even provide your own well service. We certainly wouldn't want other city residents providing their own well service within the city, and I don't think that's good public policy. I also agree with the mayor that we're at a critical juncture here. We have got to look at the future of our sewer service in the city and providing a better service than we now have that's capable of supporting future expansion. So I would also, Mr. Mayor, look forward to work toward establishing some new sewer treatment plant in the future and the appropriate siting of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Seale. Mr. Gierba.
Yeah, I have no disagreement with what the mayor is stating. My approach has always been that same thing, utilities, if you come into the city, you must be part of our utility. When we looked at this even 20 years ago, we had these kind of concerns. And part of my belief is that we did need to start doing a regional approach to our utilities, and that was 10 years ago. We don't know if we want to have our own plan, or if we want to tag into Yucca or something like that. There are aspects to which we could do something different, but we're not there at this point. We've just made a major commitment to our sewer plant and to service the citizens as we currently are. If we could do trade-offs, where we have auto annexations and that type of thing, but I'm not so sure our system's built, at least the transportation lines and so forth, to handle your property and then bring it into our city where we basically forego developing something to the north, which potentially could be serviced by Pitt Field or something else. And my other concern is that there is no benefit, from my perspective, for us to have this come in with a potential liability, and that concern that citizens, as Ms. Tahar had mentioned, will come to us expecting us to solve the problem. But even that, it isn't the issue of the plant failing as much as it is having service, having responsibility. There's gonna be this confusion between where they think they should be getting their problems solved and so forth, at just that, when you start building in multiple governments, you're gonna have multiple concerns and issues. So at my point, I believe we need to continue our growth, but we've already had direction on that between other 425 settlements and so forth, going to the south in the Celine Township. We have potential going to the north. We know we're pretty much done to the east. And as we go out to the west, if Celine Township truly wants to continue their life of a rural-type development and so forth, they're gonna have to work with us in order to decide how to do something else. And in terms of trying to annexing property, it's basically, why should we be paying anything if that's the concern, is that they'd rather have us do it, and yet we're still giving them money to basically just own the property, but yet provide all the services, all the problems that come with a larger development? So at this point, I say, if you can deal with Celine Township, I'll have it.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Councilwoman McLeod.
Yeah, we're getting down to the end, and I agree with just about everything that my colleagues have said. I think in a perfect world, being able to expand to the west would be wonderful, and I would, you know, see it as a bonus to the city, but not in the way that it currently stands. I think, again, as taxpayers in the city of Celine, that those people would be looking to us and to future councils to shoulder the responsibility and, you know, being able to take care of their needs. So, and again, I think we need to look at the long-range plans for our wastewater treatment and fixing the current issues that we currently have for our citizens that exist right now. So, that's where I am.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Mitchell.
I'm also in agreement with the rest of my peers. And I say that reluctantly because I would love to expand. I would love to have this property be part of the city. I think we do have a housing shortage. I think we need to address it. And I found myself saying this at the work meeting, you know, the future worries of, well, someday we might have to think about, you know, that, it's not someday, it's now. We need to make some very concrete plans and have some good intentional thoughtful policies. And I think the one question that remains for me, or the, you know, the bargaining with the township about their part of the village, what would happen to the escrow account that is set up? Should the state, you know, say this agreement goes through, for some reason, the city of Celine does have to provide utilities, you know, that escrow account is no longer being used, it could be used by us. But I, I just think the hurdles are too great at this point, and we owe it to our people here. Everybody needs to have excellent, excellent services, and it, it just sounds like there are too many moving pieces, as much as I want this land to come in.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe we have consensus. Here's how I'd like to move forward, and voice objections if you have any. A number of you touched on this in your comments. I will work with the city manager to schedule a work meeting, an initial work meeting, it will probably take several, in the coming months, to have an all-inclusive discussion about our wastewater capacity and extending utilities. I would also, and I'm not asking for any commitments this evening, but as a matter of public policy, I believe we should have a resolution that enumerates our approach to 425 agreements. I'd like to have something drafted, bring it back to you for your consideration and your comments, and potentially make that a part of policy by voting to approve something. Does that seem reasonable and acceptable to the group? No objections? Okay, very good. All right. Anything else you'd like to add?
30 seconds?
Please. I know it wasn't the answer you were looking for this evening, but you got consensus.
All right, I felt like I just got voted off the island. Now, I just want to say I appreciate, this is, it was a complex issue. I appreciate you looking at very thoughtful things. Where obviously we'll pursue it in other avenues with the township, and I'll commit, we'll just, we'll be good neighbors when we go ahead eventually and develop this. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard. We appreciate your time this evening. Okay, we move on to the discussion portion of the agenda, electronic use policy. Would you want to begin the discussion on that?
Sure, just, the intent here is just a brief update. As I had put in my communique, Councilmember Mitchell and I had a conference call this past week with City Attorney Smith to discuss some of Councilmember Mitchell's concerns. And so, we had that discussion, and so now the city attorney's office is working on a draft to try and work through those questions and concerns that Councilmember Mitchell had, and then we would present it, staff will pass that along to you all for continued review. I don't know, Ms. Mitchell, if you wanted to?
Are there any, yes, Ms. Mitchell, and then if anyone else has questions or comments?
I mean, I'd be interested to hear questions and comments now before I say any more of my piece.
Mr. Seale.
I read with interest your commentary on the proposed policy and your distinction between elected officials and employees. And I have some of the same questions you pose. I don't really, I guess, I would like to see us have a little more dialogue, at least as pertains to the elected official portion of any electronic use policy. Maybe even a work session or even a special meeting that talked about that as part of maybe even a training session for us about what was expected, or what could be expected from us from a legal standpoint and a practical standpoint. So, I guess I'd like to forestall the implementation of an electronic use policy as pertains to the elected officials. If the city wants to proceed for the employees, I think that's one issue.
Other comments? Ms. Dillon.
I don't know how we sort of got off into the weeds with this. Where are we with our laptops?
Well, I believe we're, we have them and we ordered them, but waiting out to see before we implement to have a policy.
But, I guess, right now, all we need is a device that shows us our packet. I mean, I guess that's, how long are we gonna drag this out with having paper? I mean, I thought that was the whole premise of the laptops, and it's like, we've sort of segwayed into this whole other dynamic. And I understand the usage, but if right now it's used for our council packets, why can't we just be utilizing them?
Well, the quick answer is if that's what council wants direct staff to do, we're certainly happy to do that. But again, the concern is, is from risk management, that we have the policy in place, so folks have an understanding of what the parameters are to operate within. But again, if council wants to move forward, we can certainly do that.
Well, let me ask this question, because while it's important to develop consensus, I'm also cognizant of the fact that we're not always going to agree on policy matters. It sounds to me, Ms. Dillon, and you correct me if I'm wrong, you're in favor of moving forward and adopting the policy as it's currently written. Would that be correct?
No.
No, you're not. Oh, excuse me, okay. So you have objections to the current policy, the way it's worded. Ms. Mitchell, you have some concerns as well. Who else has concerns about the way it's currently written? Mr. Seale, Mr. Gierba, it looks like just about everybody. So I guess what I would suggest, because knowing this group the way I do, we tend to be most effective in resolving outstanding issues when we have a work meeting. So what I would suggest is, the work meeting that is currently scheduled for September the 11th, as it states on the agenda, is extremely tentative. In fact, I would suspect that will not happen on the 11th. And even if it does happen on the 11th, that conversation could continue to a subsequent meeting. So what I would suggest is, beginning at 6:00 PM on the 11th, we do have a work meeting to discuss outstanding issues regarding the electronic use policy. Ms. Mitchell.
So, I believe the electronics use policy is mostly acceptable by this council, with the exception of the social media part. So I think we could look at a final draft without the social media stipulation and be, I think this is correct, I think we would prepare, be prepared to move on that very quickly, and then ask ourselves, do we need to amend it later?
I respect that that's your position, and the group may disagree with me. I like the social media policy as it's currently written. So I would not be comfortable moving forward without that. I'm happy to continue to have a discussion and dialogue on how we can strengthen that and improve it, but I myself would not be comfortable without that verbiage. Ms. McLeod.
I think my issue is that it's not only, it doesn't, it's sort of, doesn't have much to do with the laptops, I think, because it's the policy will apply whether we're using our own devices or whether we're using city devices, correct? Am I correct in that assumption, or is it? I mean, the social media aspect of it, anyway.
Right, to a certain extent. I mean, yes, but now it increases if you're on city devices.
Right, right. So I guess I'm kind of in agreement with Councilmember Mitchell in that fact that the tweaks that are going to be happening, in my head at least, are sort of just across the board, whether you're using your own device or whether you're using a city-owned device. So, moving forward with, I don't know if it makes sense to move forward with the laptops since they're there, they're, they need to be used.
Go ahead, Ms. Seale.
Mr. Mayor, in your absence from the room, I suggested that perhaps we have some kind of a training session, maybe even before we implement a policy and bring the laptops to the council, with some subject matter expert who has some experience. I think that's the trouble. We don't know what we don't know. We don't know how we can get ourselves in serious trouble using a city-owned laptop in today's current electronics environment. I certainly don't think we can look at the President of the United States as our shining example. But I think that we need somebody who's a little more grounded. And although Mr. Smith, I think, offered some very good points, I don't know that, I don't know how much experience he has in that regard. I imagine he's probably had to bail some people out of difficulty on a case.
He actually does a training.
Oh, does he?
Which was just confirmed by the city manager. So I guess what I would suggest is, we'll see if he's available on the 11th to come to a... to a work meeting to go over outstanding issues regarding the electronic use policy. I think that your suggestion is appropriate, Mr. Seal. Does anyone object to Mr. Seal's suggestion? No? Ms. Mitchell?
I just have a question. Are you suggesting, Mr. Seal, that we have training in lieu of a formal social media policy?
No, no.
Or do you want them both?
I think as, I think in the interim, before we adopt a policy, we have somebody talk to us about the pitfalls and the potential difficulties out there.
I see.
Involved in the use of these devices.
Thank you.
Let's, I want to end this conversation by saying this, and I was walking in the room when she was in the middle of her comments, but what I caught of Ms. Dillon's sentiment is something that I think is valuable, which is, this process has been dragging on a little bit, and the discussion is good, and we want to be thorough and thoughtful, but I also want to develop a consensus on how best to move forward. And it may be that subsequent to our meeting on the 11th, there are some people who are outliers and still object, but if a majority is in favor of moving in a particular direction, we will respond accordingly. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Sorry, you said you were ending the conversation, but I have one more thought. And that is, we also have our council code of conduct, which, the point has been made, social media does not depend upon a device. Social media is social media. So perhaps there is an aspect of social media policy that fits better, actually, in our code of conduct.
And that might be worth something, something worth considering.
So maybe we could, we could at least have that document for reference when we're looking at the electronics policy as well.
Very good. Anything further on this?
I have just a clarification. So is our policy going to be like our ethics pledge, we're each going to individually sign it, and that we agree to this? Or is this going to come to us as a motion in which we are going to vote as a body?
I would assume, well, we voted as a body to adopt a code of ethics and council guidelines, and then as it relates to the code of ethics, we sign it. My understanding is we would vote on it as we do any other policy matter.
Okay.
So it'd be placed on a council agenda.
So if you were to just vote nay, then does that mean you don't have to adhere to it?
That would not be my recommendation, nor do I think it would be the recommendation of staff or legal counsel.
Okay. Okay, I guess, going back to just very quickly, my whole thing is that if we have these devices now, I'm just hoping that we can start implementing them, because it's getting very, very difficult to keep trying to search things. And I mean, I thought that was really one of the key elements of the laptops, was getting rid of all of this paper and having an easy way to bring up information that we keep referring back to.
All right. We will revisit this on the 11th, folks. Last discussion item, Faradine property. Mr. Girbaugh.
Yeah, just a couple of things. For me, first I want to mention, what happened at the Faradine property, the Karpinski's old home, and the language and everything that was written was, for me, something that was a shock. It was disappointing that we have individuals in our community that felt that they had to go to that level of vulgar abuse and approach. We have been working to try and resolve things with the treatment plan. And for me, it's graffiti. Graffiti on anybody's private property is just a shame, and that kind of disrespect should not be tolerated in our city. When that kind of thing happens, if those owners and so forth want to prosecute, our police will follow through and make sure that that will happen. Aside from that, and this is where I'm going to just kind of be my old record, I am extremely disappointed with this developer and his failure to take care of this property after he started it. Not only have the neighbors complained, they're in violation of our own code of compliance. They may be mowing some of the lawn, but there are weeds at least six feet tall, another indication. I've had people that back up the property indicate that Edison has done work on the property, cut cables and just threw the cables and stuff on the ground. I don't know what we have for expectation on our builders, but this property is one of the worst that I've ever seen, besides the one that was 147 that sat there forever. I don't know how we have to do this in the future. We worked so hard on this development in expectation to have it fail within three months of what it was. And I numerously requested that that house be removed, and I did not realize that I had to read every single line of that contract to find out that that did not happen in that contract. That is a failure on staff's approach on how this was done. So whatever we've got to do, and whatever we need to do, whether it's fining that property or whatever, or using our blight ordinance, or whatever we have, I want to see that house removed.
Well, first, as it relates to, I appreciate the comments, Mr. Girbaugh, as it relates to issues that involve property maintenance and code enforcement, I appreciate you sharing those. And Mr. Campbell can follow up with our code enforcement officer in Building and Engineering Department this week, and they can go down there and take a look at things. And regardless of whether the development is stalled or not, if they're in violation of codes and ordinances, they'll be cited, and we can get those resolved. As Mr. Campbell has alluded to in one or more of his weekly communiques, we have invited, we will continue to invite and constructively engage the developer to come to an upcoming council meeting to talk about his plans. He did indicate, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Campbell, he did indicate that he's making the demolition of the house a priority, but obviously, we would like to have that confirmed for the public record and know a little bit more about his plans. So as soon as there's something tangible to report, we will make sure to disseminate that to the group.
Thank you.
Anything else other discussion? Then we come to our second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may come or question a city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Mr. Grossman, please.
Yeah, I'd like to briefly say I agree with your discussion earlier on the 425, but if you're having a study done on a sewer plant, is I don't think you want to rule out the possibility of the city being involved in the current sewer plant that's up there, because if anything in this discussion has said that that can be expanded to who knows how large, and I think it'd be worth getting the information from them, find out how much that plant can be expanded, because the plant's upwind of the city and downwind of everyone that's hooked to it. So there, you know, it may be a good idea for the city to be involved in that, because clearly, the possibility of this plant expanding upwind from the city with you not having any control, we all know what goes on with our own plant. What would you do then? So it may be worthwhile investigating whether the new city plant is actually that plant or some version of joint ownership, so that you can have some control over its expansion, because potentially, that's upwind of the city could be a real problem in the future. So I think it'd be well worth your while to find out what the possibilities are for that plant in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. Additional citizen comments?
I concur with Mr. Grossman's comments, because it is important we stay in contact with the Celine Township on what is being proposed. They could ideally, the development could develop and build a disposal plant on their own property. And that was addressed at the Celine Township meeting also. But on another issue of our disposal plant, I know a couple weeks ago, there was comments made that our, somehow our stinks smell differently. It's possible because we paid $755 for deodorant to the state chemical. And so apparently, we're putting deodorant into the disposal plant. I know they did that about three or four years ago, and it wasn't too cool. The other thing is, earlier at the work meeting, you talked about parking. The concern I have is for when they have the apartments, they will want to have 24-hour parking, I'm sure, for their residents. And I don't think it's up to the taxpayers to provide that. Behind Mr. Grossman, I think at one time, we used to, the city, would rent those out. And apparently, there's going to be six apartments above the old Monjamos, or whatever. And so, that definitely is something I would wish that the council would address, the permanent parking structures, and how that's going to be handled financially. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hesse. Are there any additional citizen comments? None, is there any other business to be brought before Celine City Council this evening? I would note, and I would encourage my council colleagues to, well, first to remember that we have a special work meeting next Monday, beginning at 7:00, regarding the wastewater treatment plant odor study and discussion on funding options, on how best to resolve that. The following day, Tuesday, the 29th, we do have our public forum regarding our search for a new police chief, and we strongly encourage public participation. The start time for that is 7:30, I believe? 7:30, isn't it? Yeah. Which gives folks ample time to attend the fair parade, which is the same evening. So you can do both. You can attend the fair parade, then you can come to City Hall and give us your thoughts and observations on what sort of qualities you're looking for in our next police chief. And of course, please note the other upcoming meetings in September as well. There are no absences, so the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:20 PM.
So moved?
Moved by Dillon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. This meeting is adjourned.